And we are live.
It might be the middle of next week.
Eight thirty, the tallest January eleventh meeting of the Red County official order, please everybody join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We've worked through at least the first round of the snow and getting ready for some fairly cold temperatures. Find out a couple of cool things I got to see over the last twenty four hours, got to see our herd of elk yesterday over in the, yeah, over in the east field across from Brits, yeah, on my way home yesterday, that's something you don't get to see every day. And you know if anybody else noticed, but sunrise this morning with the fog. If I hadn't been driving, I would have taken a couple of pictures of that, too, but I didn't, I refrained. But that was pretty cool, too, makes you, just makes you appreciate being in Kansas and Riley County, right? So start off with that. So we'll start off with some public comments this morning, and then we'll see anybody up on Zoom. So anybody's got public comment, now's the time.
Good morning, Lori Harrison, Riley County Emergency Management Assistant Director. As you talked about already this morning, we have some weather coming in. Snow is likely across more central northeast Kansas tonight and Friday morning, seventy to ninety percent chance. Roads could be slippery, reduced visibility due to blowing snow. Dangerous wind chills are expected Friday night through Tuesday morning. Those wind chills expecting of minus five to minus thirty with temperatures in the single digits. And that will be over the weekend and into Monday. So you're right, glad we've got Monday off. We just wanted to let folks know to prepare now for this storm. So if you need to get out and get groceries, get fuel in your vehicles, check on your elderly neighbors or those who can't get out, see what assistance you can be to them to help them get through the weekend. Also, we want to remind folks about outdoor pets and livestock to take the appropriate measures to make sure that those animals are safe. So we just want everyone to stay warm and stay aware of the weather that's coming in for the weekend.
Morning, Evan Millen, Public Works, just wanted to let everyone know that we will start burning the transportation today. Since we're in, so it's gonna be good timing.
Thanks. Flinglers work pretty good.
Vivian Leva, Public Information Officer, I got a message from Michael Bowler with household hazard is waste. Just before I came over, the Saturday remote collection they usually do over in the Howie's parking lot, they are canceling this weekend because of the cold temperature. So it will resume next month and the facility will be open to the public during regular hours next week. But the remote drop off in Manhattan on Saturdays, yes.
And I might just add as another weather related topic, Chiefs tickets got really cheap Saturday.
Fifty bucks.
And you got the public comments this morning. That said, I'll move to commission comments and we'll start with Commissioner McKinley.
You have Miami folks coming in for.
There's gonna be a real shock, a real shock, I guess they are.
So why would anyone live here?
The fire, we had fire board meeting Tuesday was postponed till last week, weather with everything else. Wednesday evening, I attended Randolph City Council. They'd spent a grand application of that water fund that we didn't look at for some water system. Then I gave information on that, you know, B I L funds that we got from K F T last week, got that bid in on that, they were looking some other projects, they might be able to submit to them. That's all I've got.
Okay, Commissioner Popey.
Okay, well, Tuesday morning, I had a doctor's appointment and did some lab work. It was a lot fun, but most of my scheduled meetings this week were postponed or canceled due to the winter storm. So shoveling snow was a major activity for me. Several times, had to buy some more salt and spread out over the ice, but all right, I did participate in a personnel committee meeting for my church. We did it via Zoom on Tuesday and then I had bell practice last night. Waiting for some parts to fix the charging system on my car, so I'm didn't really cautious in driving it and getting out. This morning, I didn't think it was gonna start in a long time. But I, I think the parts are in, I just fixed. Hopefully by the end of this week. I did spend some time going over the Keys property option contract and made some suggestions to jump. That's it for me.
Okay, even I'm gonna start out this morning by giving a huge shout out and thanks to all our local road and emergency crews and well, as all our first responders, law enforcement who went above and beyond, they always go above and beyond, but since, you know, we're in the midst of weather, and I know this isn't the first round of weather, we had snow right after Thanksgiving, but that was kind of on a Saturday, so it wasn't really sandwiched in the early part of the work week. But wanted to give everybody a shout out for all the working efforts. I know there's a couple more rounds coming in, so just wanted to know that they're appreciated and will be appreciated moving forward. Monday afternoon, everything going on, some things got switched from in person to Zoomed, rescheduled, much the same as everybody else. But did have a Zoom call with President Gannan and some others from N A T C, discuss the new programming and some incentives they're working on. Trying to work on, I guess, in the, in the new year here and would it be relevant for Riley County? And it would be something that we connect with and would it be beneficial for us as, as an organization? Had a very good dialogue and I think we're gonna have to have another discussion at some point in time, maybe later on in the semester as things progress. It's kind of hard to know when you're just kind of in a primitive state how that all those things are gonna connect. But we'll continue to talk and see where that goes. Tuesday morning, I joined K N M thirteen fifty for their in focus program, also via, and we didn't do that in person. Also with me on the program was, I guess Vivian's gone, so, but she was there. Anna was with me as well, Riley County Praiser, and Anna, hour went quick, it always goes really, really quick. And I'm, you know, it's just me yapping and whatever it is, but we started off by discussing obviously this winter wave of winter weather and local efforts to clear roads and keep things moving forward. Anna gave an update on things that are going on in her department and answered some questions that seem to be arising in real time. And some items that will be coming up here in the Kansas Legislative Session. Gave an update on some things that are going on and will be going on in twenty four, including work on the new E M S headquarters, updates to the comprehensive plan, this year's presidential election cycle, as well as the renovations that will be occurring up on the fourth floor of our building, possible strategic planning, challenges with space and facilities and other county infrastructural needs. There were a few others, as I typed this, I couldn't remember all of them, but like I said, the hour went by awfully fast. Tuesday night, I met with the Riley County Farm Bureau Board of Directors, that was also supposed to be in person, it got moved to Zoom. Boy, it felt a lot like twenty and twenty one there for a couple of days. God, it was just a couple of days, not a couple of years. Was able to give them an update on everything we're working on here in Riley County early in twenty four. We also heard from State Representative Kenny Titus from the forty first district, who gave a very early update on the beginnings of the Legislative Session. And we also heard from Dicky James from the Food and Garden Council, what they are working on, as well as their food and R X and power of the produce programs that are incorporated into that. And last we heard of some upcoming Riley County Farm Bureau member events, including the appreciation event that will be taking place in Londonville on a February twenty fifth, everybody should have received the invitation for that. Also, I was on Zoom call, because you can't multitask when you're on Zoom calls, I do remember that. Watched K State basketball game, had a scrappy game back and forth there for a while, but cats finally put the pedal down and won eighty one sixty seven. Big twelve is gonna be a gauntlet, it's gonna be a gauntlet. K U losing last night to U C H, and Houston losing pretty scored it and indicated, but pretty badly, it's gonna be fun to watch here in January and February and March. Wednesday, had the first teams call of the year for our Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee, National Association of Counties. Heard some opening remarks from our Chair Martha Schrader, Commissioner from Plaquamas County, Oregon, I was like just going that name in there once again. We heard from Richard Cho, Senior Advisor to the Secretary for Housing and Services at U D. And he spoke about the point in time count report and developments that'll be coming here in twenty twenty four with that. We also heard a presentation from Heather Gorman, who's the A V P Government Affairs Director for the National Association of Home Builders. And Paul Care, he's the Program Manager for Energy Codes and Standards for the National Association of Home Builders. They talked about the Federal Housing Finance Agency Plan to adopt some of the latest energy codes and how they apply to building and particularly housing. Michael Matthews, Legislative Director for the Committee, gave us an update as usual on things happening in Capitol Hill. I make sure of good things, bad things, some things that are still working themselves out. Also provided us with a preview of next month's Legislative and Policy Conference that'll be in Washington, D.C. So I'll go ahead and put in a plug, I will be attending that conference, we'll talk about it a little bit later as we get into February. And late yesterday afternoon, I met with John Ellerman, we'd already had this planned, it wasn't anything weather related. Public Works Director, just to discuss a few items, obviously snow removal and everything came up, but talked about the upcoming township meeting, that's on March third, I believe. Just some things with townships in general, discussions on some winter department challenges and some things in the future, to name a few. So it's just the first of meetings that I usually try to have with all the department heads early in the year. So we did stay a little late yesterday, appreciated him doing that, just discussed his items and had a good conversation, so it was good. So that's all I've got this morning, so we can move on to business.
Okay, first time I need a motion to approve following official depositories eligible to receive Riley County funds as listed.
Move to approve the list of twenty twenty four official depositories.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded on approval of the twenty twenty four official depositories, all those in favor?
Next, I need a motion for a tax rule correction.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax rule correction.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the signatures for all the tax rule corrections, all those in favor?
Chair, please sign.
That's, I practiced my good signature again.
Next, I have Riley County Employee Action Forms for Heather Bigwood, as new museum assistant in Museum Department, Separation of Service. David Cobb, new hire, volunteer firefighter stipend, Riley County Fire District Number One. Crystal Brewer, clerk analyst two, Motor Vehicle Department, Treasurer's Office, Separation of Service, all three sign please. Next, we're going to have joint city county meeting, you have any agenda items, topics?
Is that here or solved? I'm in there.
I was gonna ask that, too.
All the days, you got messed up on that.
City offices.
It's at the city?
Eighteenth.
On the eighteenth?
Probably gonna have a topic or two maybe later, but I don't think they're ready for this second in January.
Okay.
Okay, that's at four?
Yes, ma'am. City offices. Any items for the intergovernmental luncheon?
Where, they always switch every year, where is it and who's?
K State's in charge. And I don't, I don't have a deal about this parking, they were gonna get us parking.
They did, early on, I remember that, that was gonna be at the Union, and I, because I was feeling all great for parking, so.
But somehow they're gonna get some of the permits for us to park in there.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, they do that pretty easily.
So that'd be a first, we've never had it there, so.
And that one is Monday?
Monday, the twenty ninth, June.
Any topics?
No, nothing to give a presentation on, I guess I'll have a, some kind of a summary or something.
Gotcha, yeah, for sure. Okay, Commissioners, need a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable?
I'll make a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve payroll and accounts payable, all those in favor?
All three sign please. Commissioners, have any changes to the minutes?
Didn't see anything.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes in January eighth meeting, have submitted.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from February eighth meeting, I was written, all those in favors?
Tenanted gems look okay, Commissioners? Remember, we will have Good Morning Manhattan next Thursday, since we're not here Monday, so we'll start at nine here. And on Friday, we have the chamber retreat.
Yes.
Any items for next week's, not next week's, the week after that's press conference?
Have to get back to you.
Yep, let me know, as on anything, drop me an email if you need anything added. Commissioners, I have Mr. Holman at nine o'clock. Thank you, ladies.
Yeah, really, I was, I'd say he's
Thank you, he's probably just gonna give you an update.
I'll come out a little later to the, just like.
Yeah, remember that discussion topic last time.
That's what we see over the last two nights, four out of the top five teams, that's well, lost unranked teams.
Thank you. Good.
Purdue, K U, Houston.
Yeah, Purdue, I remember hearing about that.
I can't remember who, Purdue lost to Nebraska, we were so embarrassed, we got beat by Nebraska. We can, I can't remember the other ones.
And like they said, Nebraska's kind of dropped off the map for a while, but they kind of got things rolling now again with everything. Football's getting better, basketball and that's good, I like to see that. I always, I don't mind if Nebraska's at the top, long as we're one step ahead of them, you know, and beat them.
I see mine's one of the worst.
Let me curious, see what Alabama does.
Yeah, that was what we shot this, well.
Heard there was another coach, too, this morning, but I didn't hear the name.
And Carroll and, and Carroll, Pete Carroll, Pete Carroll and Bill Belichick.
Was there another college coach? I'd heard something on radio this morning about another big old coach this morning, but I didn't hear the name.
But they were talking this morning, they had to do that, I think it's Jim Harbaugh, sweet mistakes. Who's gonna bid him on, they're saying he's probably gonna go after Pro Nineties on the air.
My son-in-law thinks the head coach at Oregon put Alabama.
That's what I saw some stuff last night about that, see.
Well, I've heard the great line that a lot of it for McSaven has to do with the current state of college football.
I don't blame it, I don't blame it.
Usually the old one.
Exactly, and it's cost them the last couple of years, if you haven't noticed.
Well, they already had, there was something that one of their star recruits already, they answered their commitment right after he announced.
It is, though, you know, but they didn't have near the star power this year and a lot of new pieces, but he just proved how good a coach he is, because they were right there at the end of the year. It's down, they looked bad at the beginning of the season.
Alabama for so long is, you know, they, they retool every year with everything that they had, because they built that recruiting base you know, three years in advance, so.
And now it's a guy who played his first year, he can go somewhere else.
Exactly, so you can't do that anymore and that just.
Yeah, that's, that's a liar, I mean, you know, Avery Johnson may, you know, blow the doors off the college football next year and so who's gonna pay him three million to go somewhere the next year? That's, that's not right.
And that's the whole thing now, too, is with NFL structure, they're not gonna go to the NFL after their sophomore year, they're gonna stay in school and go someplace else and make refunds the money.
Well, unless you're a first round pick, yeah, yeah, I used to stick around. Well, that's what I heard last night. I was listening, I watched part of the women's game and then listened to it on the way back. That what's named Walker on the women's team, were freshmen, hid two commercials on. Different role.
It's unreal.
She's good, so we gotta get her in that, tearing sides from both of her, fireball, they take off.
We're gonna be tough to handle on that one.
What did you see after winning two games by twenty points last week?
We dropped off in the polls.
They dropped one spot in the polls. Very careful not to win again. Now, Saturday is a big thing, Texas.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see exactly what we, what we stack up.
Yeah, but you see K U's women beating Baylor's.
Too. Just so much parody, both sides, man, and it's
So the top, or the top five lost unranked. You, yeah, did not like, yeah, they did not look like a good team. Dude, you, yeah, they didn't look like, they didn't.
I didn't think so, they, they didn't look like they were engaged in the game or anything, really.
Turn around and beat them. He should have started off, too. Oh, and that's, so I'm gonna get into the game, they run out of time, somebody was trying to post up his that's a big, some of the big guy, K U, he just turned up, slapped the guy, knocked him clear off on foot, and they didn't call anything. He's the one that got caught, you know, got the flagrant, because he got so he tosses people.
Now, women's game last night was getting a little scrappy there for a little bit.
Yeah, that's, I Jan said it was getting a little aggressive.
That's a good name about the Big Twelve, and you know, they do, they do typically let everybody play, that's what I remember back in the seventies. They have a men's game. Big Twelve pulled a tie that's getting me, and we'd go to the tournament and just get that's not me, just because they didn't call anything, they told me. And, and all of a sudden, everybody else was coming, was letting play a little more, we'd get just slowly. It's kind of that way in mid, mid to late eighties, too, to certain extent. In a couple of years, we had Steve Henson or Keith Humphrey in the, in the backcourt. You get fouled, they get, they draw fouls a lot, because they both shoot like ninety percent plus from the foul line, but well, they take some, they take some obvious flagrant type of fouls, but.
Where's Henson at now?
Some I knew, yeah, I just saw it, read some words, Texas San Antonio. Yeah, taking hell passes, but yeah, you're in. He's been there for a while. Not doing overly well there in terms of winning and loss, but.
His mom always wanted him to come here, she was the county clerk, first county clerk for a long time, Susan Mangus was her name.
I always thought his little brother was Eric. We had to go to Washburn and then he transferred here, and I got the signature on the basketball, then, then I, Brian.
Ryan, Ryan, yep.
I thought he was actually gonna be better at some point in time, but.
He actually worked at Secretary of State's office for a little while, he was a nice guy.
I went to Washburn for a year or two and transferred here and played pretty sparingly.
Yeah, Susan Mangus, when she, she always wanted my position here at Riley County, she actually applied for a job here, I've had a couple county clerks in other counties that have applied for jobs under me, one from Marshall County previously. Landau, Gail Landau.
Landau family?
Yeah.
Did you read that? Chief Jess said that that hijack, that ransom thing on the system was from Russian.
Oh, really? I did not hear that.
Yeah, she, that.
Oh, they finally started talking.
The announcement at the I guess she gives a presentation at the start of the legislature.
I did not hear that.
Said it was a Russian group, but.
And it was ransomware?
Ransomware, but they ended up, they didn't pay, they
That's what takes, it took some
They didn't pay, they went back and redid it, but they, you know, and they talked about how much they could prove, you know, what doing.
The state, the state of the court speech or whatever they give right out of governors, yeah.
Apparently FBI was
Yeah.
They had federal direction on how to correct it, which is good. Interesting.
I had not heard it was actually ransomware, that was part of the speculation at the beginning.
Yeah, I kept hearing that, but no, she said, but it's their enemies of Russia.
Did she talk about the, what we heard, again, I don't know if this was any official or not, that it was whoever, whatever entity was doing this, tested other places and was kind of moving up the scale, complexity of the organization.
I didn't see it, I mean, I actually didn't hear the whole thing, I just saw something coming out, it wasn't the highlights, no.
Sit on the chair the wrong way, it goes down.
Sitting on the chair the wrong way, it goes down.
You ready, commissions?
Yes, go ahead, Nancy.
Uh, Clancy Homel, Riley County Council, good morning, commission. Uh, see, I have, one item I want to bring to you, something part of this meeting is a proposed letter to the Senate Assessment Taxation Committee. In opposition to House Bill twenty thirty six, that of course, as you know, is the Disabled Veterans Tax Exemption Bill. And I thought it might be helpful if I just walk you through the text. And you may spot something if I read through this. Uh, but it might not otherwise get your attention, we may want to change or add to. And it begins, of course, with this addressed to Dear Chair Tyson, members of the committee. Our county commission unanimously joins the Leavenworth County Commission in opposition to House Bill twenty thirty six. It creates a new property tax exemption across the state. These, that statewide impact will be significant, and here I left out something that impact. I want to modify that for sense a little bit, that's, or its statewide impact, we could say that, its statewide impact will be significant in those counties with military installations. After all, retired military personnel often turn to those communities where they served our country before retirement. Those communities are attracted to military retirees in part because of the quality of life Kansas counties routinely offer all their residents. That quality of life is improved daily through county expenditure of local property tax dollars to provide all local assistance, lawn torsion, fire protection. Ambulance service, law maintains those bridges, vehicle registration of title services, and health department services. That list could be, excuse me, the list could be continued to include all state mandates for county expenditures. But all those county infrastructure expenses depend among a healthy county operating budget. Equally important, local citizens must believe their required contribution of property tax dollars is their fair share. As you know, all counties are required by state law to fund their annual operating budgets primarily by their percentage share of the annual property tax collections. Counties collect property tax for all units of government, including the state. The counties receive a small share of those public collections, Riley County retains approximately twenty-five percent in most years. The property tax dollars available to fund Riley County's twenty-five percent share is reduced by every. It's, are, are reduced by every existing property tax exemption created by the state. The percentage share is. But the dollars received are fun, Riley County's budget are reduced, and this reduction to county budgets occurs statewide. This reduced revenue through any property tax exemption undermines the ability of counties to fund the above locally imported services. Historically, the cost of those local services is more and not less expensive each year. That means counties must reduce or eliminate such local services or increase property taxes through an increased workload. If House Bill twenty thirty six passes in its current form, there will be an unfair shift of the local property tax burden. That shift will be away from some disabled veterans who have the ability to pay their share of the total property tax burden. Their burden will be shifted entirely onto those remaining taxpayers who are not entitled to this new property tax exemption. The most unfair aspect of House Bill twenty thirty six as written is that it contains no income threshold or its automatic grant of exemption. That's unfair because even those retired disabled veterans without economic need for the exemption will receive. And that is in a logical distinction between that particular disabled veteran and the remaining local property taxpayers. That disabled exempt veteran will continue to use the same local services which the remaining local property taxpayers must continue to pay. For the remaining property taxpayers will be doing so even when that particular. Disabled veteran has ample financial resources to pay their fair share of the property tax burden. We encourage this committee to not pass twenty thirty six in its current amendment. Any final version of this new property tax exemption should contain an income threshold. That may help taxpayers who share the property tax burden will increase to decide it is a fair shift of funding responsibility. Thank you for this opportunity on the Riley County Commission's opposition to House.
I know it's long. But, uh, it doesn't have a lot of data in it, but. One reason I referred back to the Leavenworth County position, so we might as well take advantage of the fact that they've got plenty of numbers there. They're not gonna probably really look at the numbers and the data and testimony anymore, I've got two others. I want to add to this, I, I think just besides, um. Just because, just besides the income threshold, I, I, I think it needs to be, I already want to. Wordsmith this, it needs to be a hundred percent permanent dis- disability. Needs to be defined as one hundred percent. Because the, the bounds of disabilities changed back and forth, seventy percent could mean, you know, you. You broke your ankle and you just can't walk properly technically, I mean, I mean, I can live with, I can live with a property tax exemption if it's. One hundred percent and it's defined as permanent, you're not gonna recover from it. It's verifiable that you got that into combat and it's gonna hamper your abilities to be able to work, to be able to operate, to be able to create a living for yourself. That's what that's defined as, so.
And it is a consensus, if I'm hearing you right, it's one hundred percent permanent disability caused by combat.
Well, it's gonna be defined, that's what the disability is gonna be defined.
Okay, well, I just want to ensure because that's not what they said, Sam.
I know.
So, so you want to reference the combat, basically.
Well, I, no, I'm not worried so much about being injured, yeah.
So you could have, yeah, and that's, that's right, you have a hundred percent, it's really an automobile accident.
Or in service.
While you're.
But I'm not wordsmithing that, right?
The one thing that I think this sets up is, it's an inequitable, um, distinction between disabled veterans and disabled people in general. You know, which would be something that could, if this passes, could come on in the next session, and then we've got everybody in disability gets a property tax exemption, which. There are quite a few in the private sector, so I don't, I don't.
Well, this has to do with being of military service, which isn't the same, it's just regular disability, but that'll be the next step.
We should say something about that in this letter.
Okay.
It creates an inequitable.
Well, that's kind of what, sort of what I was taking towards, not that specifically, but I, and we can change, I don't have any problem plugging that in, it's. A distinction between one hundred percent disabled military and one hundred percent disability anywhere else.
General, yeah.
From any other source, I mean, we can, we can do that as long as there's consensus to do it, I'll bring you back a draft during the same meeting, the peasants, you can look at the language. We do have to turn this in by tomorrow.
Yeah, and I.
Now, that's.
We don't put it in this one, but I think that that's something that.
Well, they're gonna start testimony on Tuesday and Wednesday with everything being closed Monday, it's gotta be done.
That's Jay Hall saying it, you know?
Yeah, I saw him.
I agree with what Catherine says, and guys, my dad's a veteran, so. And Commissioner Ford and I had an email in Clancy yesterday, and I said, this is exhibit one to the number one problem with Kansas tax policy exemptions. I've had conversations with one small businessman here in town this week and another, uh, ta- uh. Resident that watches taxes closely that has spoke before this board numerous times this year. And talked about these tax exemptions. Uh, I think King was exactly right, our previous county treasurer, the only fair tax is a tax on someone else. And that individual that comes and talks to you frequently, I talked about, the small businessman in here in town said Shawnee County has implemented, uh. Uh, tax exemption for the elderly. Well, and so I said, I said, well, that wouldn't, that would really surprise me because that'd be a large tax exemption, so let me call, I know a lot of people there. But I then ended up finding the article, it was, uh, the city of Topeka, it was for, uh, the senior citizen sixty-five and over, but then it had parameters, and I sent the link to him and it's. Income level of thirty-seven thousand seven fifty, and he goes, well, I, I called him back and said, here it is, I sent it to you, that doesn't apply to me. Everyone wants less and less taxes, and those that get less and less taxes put it on you and I. That's, that's the number one problem with our taxes, everyone can say the churches deserve it, the boy scouts deserve it, the girl scouts deserve it. All of those need all of those services that he put in his letter, plus elections, plus roads, plus everything. You know, I can name how many other good causes that don't get tax exemptions right now, where does it stop?
Well, what I'm gonna tell you is, while that's all true. And real, something here is gonna pass, it just, it just is, so I want to make it clear what, you know, I think would be okay if we're gonna, if it's going to pass because. What I'm seeing here currently out of twenty twenty thirty, or twenty thirty six, just isn't good, so.
And, and that's exactly why I don't get the involved, and I, I was just asked last night by Dick Carr, our lobbyist, there's gonna be a big elections discussion next Tuesday to come and do a presentation tonight. I just don't to the legislature or get involved in our association much more because a lot of people in our association take that attitude. Well, something's gonna pass, so we just gotta make it work, I don't work that way, if I'm gonna say it's wrong, I'm gonna say it's wrong, and I'm not going to back down and get something more moderate. And so I just don't agree with that, this is what's gotten us into this tax situation we are in, all of these tax exemptions through my entire career, which is now twenty-eight years, I'm on the twenty-eighth year of watching this. Tax system erode.
Yeah, I'm. I think it needs to be brought up because this could, this could trigger a big lawsuit again, you know, by the other dis- disabled people in the state, you know, and. And I think we need to say something about it.
It could be litigation, I don't think it'd be litigation, it'll just be a request next year.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It would be tough not to, people, because it's sort of, I always think of this legislation by title. And we said earlier, who's gonna come out against disabled veterans, and being perceived as coming out against this, no, we're, we're not coming out against disabled veterans. Who would, who would not honor, what we're saying is, that's not a distinction that legislatively makes sense. Because the services will still be used. And the idea of a property tax that's fair is that the burden, that you've heard your county browser say many, many times, not that it has to be perfect. But it's gotta be perceived as fair if you want people to support it even grudgingly. Uh, this is that, that there's some kind of rational division of, of the share that everything pays. Because you can shrink in that pool, and even I can figure out, eventually you're gonna have a very small number pay all of the property tax.
We already do.
Well, I mean, it'll, it's not going, it's not pooling in acres. We're, we're shrinking, every exemption that the state puts out there. And every, every, every expense that you're required to fund every year by state law. Because it doesn't come from anywhere else from the property tax, you're getting less and less resources. Uh, as you know, I'm not telling you things you don't know, again, part of this again. It's geared not only to the committee. With your permission on some of these things that are important enough for you to send a letter, we need to continue to send it forward and have a CC for immediate press release. There's nothing wrong with that, because that is education. The public knows when you have these public discussions what your position is, we're not revealing anything, we're not telling anybody what to vote for, we're saying pay attention. And then vote whatever way you want to vote, when it comes to, and this is not a statewide vote, and this is not a county project.
So realistically, this isn't gonna affect all hundred and five counties either.
Yeah, it'll affect, it'll affect to one degree or another. You know, you're gonna have some counties that will presumably no disabled veterans.
Exactly, right.
And doesn't have, in certain areas, doesn't have a military installation. But they're still exempt from the local property tax, you don't have to have a military. The big impact will be in those that have banks of some kind of facility.
Yeah.
Whether, whatever category it's in. But it's, you know, Zedwick County or Leavenworth or whatever. And when you're saying it looks like it's gonna do something, I, in a Leavenworth County's letter noted that. Ms. Tyson mentioned we need to make revisions to the homestead tax, like go through that one, be a lot cleaner, whether they do it. Well, it's interesting, I almost, but I thought this is already two pages, so I quit, but I started to talk about, well, this is also duplicative. Because in some sense, it's not, homestead is not an exemption. But because you have to get a refund, yes, but it hasn't, it has, the very last paragraph defines disabled veteran. And you're really, you're, you're trying to fix something and maybe it's not broken here. Uh, because it defines disabled veteran for purposes of the homestead, and it says that don't, it also lifts the definition. Out of that. But then it changes the way that that population is treated. And I agree that when you start reading it, it's, okay, the exemption's either whatever, it starts out at whatever it does, then it goes all the way.
It's a sliding scale, and every year the Veterans Administration along with the Department of Defense changes those definitions. So what might be seventy percent districts, I think that's one of them, could actually be a hundred percent next year based off of determining factors, so it's a moving target. So, and I'm, I'm just saying, if anything, it needs to at least be specific to start with, and it needs to be definable as not gonna recover from any of those injuries, and, you know.
Well, is there consensus to change, to plug in something that says one hundred percent disability due to service or something, something along those lines? Yeah, I feel like saying, I'm the one saying. Because there's no threat, income threshold in the, in the disability.
At least.
Hundred percent, because people, when you say disabled veteran, they assume in some day we'll.
Yeah.
It's not somebody who's had superior loss.
Right. To me, that's a hundred percent.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So we want to do a hundred percent or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Consensus for that, I do want, I'd like to add, Rich suggested, too, I forgot on service, my apologies, I left out elections, that's a good one to plug in, I don't, that will catch their eye. The word election will catch their eye during twenty twenty-four, that that is a locally funded service. So, is there consensus to add that to, and then do you want Catherine mentioned the distinction between disability populations? That is not logical.
Yeah.
Something along those lines?
Yeah.
Yeah, you might find that out, so maybe trim one of the other paragraphs a little bit, so we aren't getting.
Trim a paragraph?
So you're not getting to three pages.
Yeah, I understand, no, I, and I'm like, whoa, we're not to, I'll tell you this, it will not exceed these two pages, I cannot guarantee it will go down from there. Uh, but, and I do want to, I kind of mentioned a couple, there's a couple grammatical things, tense that I got.
Yeah, I saw, I was gonna.
I'll check, I'll try and catch those, but. This isn't gonna be in front of the, the group of English teachers, so I'm not too afraid, I will catch the most obvious.
Yeah, I caught a couple.
What was this thing from Catherine you were gonna add?
Uh, it's not, it's, there's an illogical distinction between disability populations, I'll find a way to say. Disabled veterans and then just the rest of the disabled communities in the state, something like that.
Okay.
Something that's, that shows there's a distinction being made, that it's not appearing logical. And, you know, that's almost an imitation.
Logical or.
So they must say that, oh, disabled persons are now exempt, you know, which, you know. I don't think there'll be an appetite for that. But who knows?
Well, if it's said, you know, it's out there, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's always possible, you can't, you can't, there is a mistake, you can almost get too careful. About some of this stuff, and, and I'm also, as Rich mentioned, too, I'm a fan of, be telling when something's wrong, it's wrong, and tell them why. And I'm glad that Leavenworth County has plenty of numbers, which means we don't have to plug them in. And last I knew, our level of, uh. Exemption countywide is about twenty-five percent, is that true, Rich?
What was that?
Is our level of exemption countywide about property tax exemption is about?
Close to forty.
No, it's forty-one point six at the end of October.
That's why I wanted to check.
We were just talking about that Tuesday morning, too.
Yeah, anytime I throw that out, the people that aren't aware of that, they're just amazed.
Yeah, they're found by that.
Forty percent of the otherwise assessable property.
I would say, I would put close to forty-two. I'd use close to forty-two. That's what it is, that's not, I'm fine, we're not cheating it.
Then, you know, that's just it, I mean, that impacts the schools and impacts the city of Manhattan, it's, it's amazing the level of services we provide.
Our CPDs under a hundred percent out of blocking.
And I'm hoping they will catch that, and I may find a way to tie it, I'll see if I can take a way to tying that, because that's why I said we're collecting it for everybody, and we're keeping twenty-five.
Yeah.
We're keeping twenty-five percent of the forty percent we're allowed to tax, but actually required to tax. Leaning out the, leaning out that forty percent we cannot touch, whatever, I'll come up with something that doesn't be too tangled, hopefully. I'll bring it back to you in this meeting because we do need to turn it in tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, so we got plenty of time.
They're having a two-day testimony on this Tuesday for those that are in favor, and then on Wednesday for those that are against, and it looks like it's nine thirty AM.
It is each day.
Yeah, each day, when Senate Taxation Committee, right?
I actually don't intend to go up for this, I'm assuming it's written on the testimony. Just I don't assume.
It's during the workday for me, I'd have to take off of work and I. Unless I'd rather kind of not, so I'd maybe.
Rather you save ammo for that kind of thing, something, there's plenty, I think you're gonna have enough data in front of them. Both written from us and written from others, I'm hoping, in case these. Both written from us and written from others, I'm hoping, in case he's. Encouraging people to submit stuff. I think the in-person stuff, you can easily, in good conscience, reserve that to those things that are most credible. And this won't be the first time this is out there. So you'll have another chance. If there's a hearing, if there's hearings they don't vote or. If there's a chance to go back and visit the legislators first. That just might make sense. I wouldn't act as too much. By not being there next week. Based on this. And. Getting out of the way. Share something. Thank you. That is, that is important. Go ahead, Vivian.
Good morning, Commissioner, against Vivian Lee, about Public Information Officer. Um, just a brief discussion. As Clancy mentioned here, and as I mentioned before, when I come to my monthly updates, um. Finding new ways to reach the audiences is very important for us. It's something I spend a lot of time doing. People uh get their information out of our variety of different ways. We invest a lot of time and effort. Into uh encouraging community engagement. As we know, a helping democracy relies on an informed public, so. Anything we can do to get in reach to people, to get them to, to tune into meetings, to participate in the process. To move barriers for them to understand what's going on here at the, the local level. Which is where they have the most. Opportunity to have an influence over what happens uh in their daily lives related to government work. Um, Commissioner Ford has been gracious enough to offer his time to do brief video updates before commission meetings. Just as another opportunity to let people know what's going on and encourage them to tune into the meeting, become informed. Uh, the videos would be live on uh the Riley County Facebook page. Um, Monday and Thursday mornings, probably at eight o'clock, just right before the meeting starts. With the intention of just discussing the upcoming agenda, I don't, without an opinion or. Any sort of political spin on it. Just, this is what we're talking about today. This is how you can find more information, this is how you can tune in. And just as another touch point with the audience. I, Commissioner Ford, I don't know if you would like to add anything to that.
Yeah, for me, it's not even gonna be about advocacy necessarily, it's just. Um, just another tool in our toolbox to, you know, I was thinking about, you know, a series of public hearings. For instance, it's a way to let people know, hey, this is coming up this month, this is what we're talking about. This is how the public hearing is gonna go, so on and so forth, or. Um, you know, even if we were just using this, this morning as an example, we could talk about. Um, maybe our bid processes and how we talk about those for dump trucks and trailers and. Stuff that maybe most people don't think about, or maybe isn't overly exciting or. Over the top or something, just, just so they know what we're working on and, and what, what we talk about and what we discuss in. In our meetings and it's more of a visual approach than other than just the black and white words and numbers that you.
Well, it would, it would, wouldn't it be better to have it? Uh, maybe a day or so ahead of time, so people were probably looking. Also to have people participate to come to the meetings or that, or, or go online. And maybe once a week to, so people can plan their schedules, they wanna come on this idea. Instead of every.
Think it's, maybe we gotta play with that a little bit to see what maybe works. I'm, I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I don't.
You know, I mean, but it's a lot of work to come in, be late for. But also you might, if you do it, that, what, which air place might, might mention. We're discussing that if, you know, if you can't make meetings, we will be on video and, and recorded so you can go back, you know, I mentioned, you can go back and look at it. If you have questions about what was.
Yeah, and, and another thing I thought we might be able to do is rotate the commissioners as opposed to just always putting that burden on your debt.
Well, I think we were talking about just the chair, the person who's chaired that, and then. From my perspective, this isn't something that we have to make a policy to do. It's up to whomever's chair that particular year can decide if this is something they wanna continue to do or. Not do. And then, you know, that's just kind of a yearly thing. If it, if it works out, it may, it may not. I think it's just something that we're. Kind of trying, I think, is what we kinda come to the conclusion of, see if it. It catches hold and if it doesn't, maybe it doesn't.
You can check and see how many people.
Yeah, you're gonna be doing that.
Or just to see whether it's reaching anybody or not.
And we can also um kind of one step beyond that if we're interested. Uh, kind of monitor how many people are watching on YouTube. You know, the addition of the video and maybe a link to watch the meeting on YouTube, we get a little bit of audience or. This is same saying, do we feel like people are becoming more aware or?
Yeah, just, so you think, just try it for a while and see whether.
Use your love that. It's hard for me to measure. Okay, I told you about this, has it had an impact? There's not really good way to measure, so we just keep scattering seeds and see what grows.
It's worth a try, you know, and then if you see, you know, maybe in a month or two. Once it catches on, we can kinda look at it and see if it's had an impact.
And the nice thing is, is I already have all the equipment, so there's no anticipated financial. Piece of this and it's good practice for both of us producing video and.
Being on video.
Speaking on camera, so.
You got the makeup kit ordered, right?
Do you have a time limit?
About three minutes or so, three to five minutes, kinda depending on what's actually going on with the agenda or. Maybe if it's very agenda life, maybe we talk about some current events that are going on, maybe like. Well, for instance, like Monday, maybe it would be like weather related or something like that, or as we get into the spring, maybe we talk more about. Hopefully we don't have to talk about it, but maybe like wildfires or, you know, spring weather or something like that or. Um, you know. We'll go with it and see what happens.
So are you gonna be able to adjust your schedule at work to do that?
We're gonna do it in the morning right before the meeting. It's gonna, well, we might, we might talk about that too. We've talked about, maybe like a Sunday night and do both of them or some. We just gotta see, play with that a little bit, tool with it, but it's gonna take like three to five minutes. It's not a big schedule.
Can you do that remote?
Like having something that I, to myself.
Can you do that remote?
Yes, we can do that remote.
Yeah, that way that would, you can do that like if you ever, you know, ever in the morning.
Or like next month when, for instance, I'll be in Washington DC. Well, we'll play around with it, but we need to make sure that we're all comfortable with that and, you know.
That is, and I think it was important to come before, I'll make sure this was in line with your goals, your communication, have you? You felt comfortable with it?
And if there's major changes or something with it, obviously we would wanna come back and discuss the thing. Or consensus either one.
It's just, consensus is fine to give it a try. That's good.
Get some feedback.
I'll plan to come back maybe next month with a little bit of information, whatever information we have and it might take a little bit longer than that.
Yeah, I might, you know, yeah, Vivian, I just might say put that in your, uh. Your typical monthly update, add that to it. We'll go from there. Um, I'll chat, we'll chat after the meeting today if you have a few minutes.
I have an appointment, but I will, we'll be able to get together.
Okay, sounds good. Next mission, you have Shiloh at nine thirty. Bid time, huh? Thank you, man.
I got one of these, but I probably won't use it.
I got, I got one of these.
Does it work?
It does, and it's, it's in the shape of a corn ear.
That's cool.
Oh, gotcha.
This came from the real.
I don't know, I inherited it. It wasn't something I got.
This is a house. But that's bigger, that's not.
Well, if you think about the three little pigs, didn't they try to build a house out of corn or something?
It was straw and what was in the other one?
What was that? They make the three houses, one, the last one was brick. Sticks, yeah.
It's questionable.
Been a while since I read The Three Little Pigs.
I know. Well, you know, you know the grandchild coming up.
I'll have to get back familiar with them again, but yeah, it's been, it's been twenty three years. Well, not no Shiloh.
Good morning, Commissioner, Shiloh Hager with the revenue um numbers for December of twenty twenty three. The, we ended the year with a county general fund balance of nineteen million, two fifty seven, seventy five. Thirteen and a total fund balance. Of one thirty six, one hundred and thirty six million, one ninety two, one thirty nine, seventy one. Um, a lot of that is our tax holding funds, which first half taxes were collected through the end of December. And those will be distributed on January um twentieth of year of twenty four. We ended the year with net. Interest to the, to the general fund of two million, five ninety seven, three eighteen forty two. And we had interest in the ARPA fund of six hundred ninety five thousand, sixteen dollars and seventy one cents. Our interest rate on the active checking account at the end of December was five point four eight percent. Our general fund revenue for the month of December. Was before transfers in were seven hundred sixty two thousand, four seventy eight, seventy seven. I did transfer the three hundred thousand dollars from motor vehicle. Um, that was budgeted um for twenty twenty three. That transfer was made in December. Which made total revenue in the general fund for the month of December of one million, sixty two thousand, four seventy eight, seventy seven. You can see here that our total, our total budgeted revenues came in eleven and a half percent over. Over budget for twenty twenty three. Um, sales tax. Riley County's portion of the sales tax that we retained for December was four hundred sixteen thousand, nine forty one, sixty eight. A hundred ninety three thousand, five sixteen, thirty four was the general fund um sales tax. And two hundred twenty three thousand, four twenty five, thirty four is the road and bridge sales tax.
That first one isn't. They're all three made, labeled road, scroll back up a little bit. That first one isn't road and bridge, right?
This was the twenty twenty two road and bridge, the old road and bridge account.
What, what's the next one?
That's, remember in, in twenty three, we still had two months of the old road and bridge.
Those two are the same, they're the same one. It's just when it ended in twenty three.
Oh, okay, oh, it's twenty two, okay, I was looking, okay.
Sorry.
Miswritten, I'm sorry.
It passed in twenty thirteen, yeah.
Yeah, and then if these were twenty two's numbers, these are twenty three's numbers. We ended twenty twenty three um over budgeted in sales tax, um what we retained of thirty four point four six percent. And, you know, we did, um for twenty twenty four, we did up our um budgeted amount for sales tax, so. We'll see where, see where we start out in the new year. And these are just showing you year to date, um the general fund. Sales tax amount. Year to date is two point seventy percent over where we were in twenty twenty two. And uh. The road and bridge is obviously still obviously down compared to previous years based on the change in the sales tax rate. And then this slide here shows you how our total sales tax that we collected. Were seven hundred eighty one thousand, two oh seven, and how those are distributed among the small cities and the county. Any questions about any of that? I did run, uh, I ran an abstract um to see what, compare where we are um on our, on our tax collections. And through the end of December, we had collected just over fifty five percent of the twenty twenty three tax rule, so. Just a little over half, which is what we wanna see. Um. We're gearing up very heavily, I think I've told you, on heavy trucks and trailers are getting ready to start here in January, February. And then one of the final things I just wanted to make you aware of, starting with. The A renewal, so last names that start with A's, businesses that start with A's, which those um. Expire at the end of February. And the state is beginning phase one of their license plate embossed plate replacement. So I just wanted you to be aware that. Anybody that has a standard, which are the blue license plates, that have the raised embossed letters. Will get a new digital plate, the flat plate with the new numbering series, which is. Four numbers, three letters, so. Um, and so starting in, so we're, we're starting to see some of those renewals come through right now. Um. Those, if you're coming in over the counter, you'll get a temporary license plate. Um, we have been told by the state that they have been in contact with law enforcement. And they're not going to require you to actually put that on your plate or on your license plate. And then take it off when the new plate comes in the mail. Um, if you, um, cause what's gonna happen is you're gonna get a temporary license plate with your new number. And then your license plate is actually gonna be mailed to you from the state. So that's going to be fun.
So what about, what about the opposite? If you don't have an embossed one and you have the three numbers and the three letters?
Those are, those are still fine for now.
Okay, and then what's the process now with the? New license plate after the other license plate that they decided not.
So, so there's going to be two licensed, so right now you're gonna get the blue license plate, the flat, the. What's currently out there right now. Once the new plate is available, which we've been told that's gonna be probably July, June or July. It'll just switch over to the new design. So there'll be two standard plates. One will be the old blue one, one will be the new. With the, with the dome on it. Uh, but they will all be digital and they will no longer be the embossed. Um. Eventually the plan is to. We're how, they're gonna, they're wanting to get rid of all duplicate. License plate numbers, so for example. You can have an antique that's one thousand, you could have a case tape plate that's one thousand, you can have an. A commercial plate that's one thousand right now. They're wanting to get rid of mainly for law enforcement and. There's a lot of problems when people, especially with the digital tolling, as people go through tolls with those, all those numbers being the same. They don't necessarily look at what type of license plate that is, so. A lot of changes coming in the future. I just don't know. We're gonna have to go one step at a time. So right now, embossed plates will start being, so. Any of you like myself, Rich, have a K, a zero zero, I have zero zero one KSU, it's, I, I have to get rid of it.
You gotta catch me first. You better catch him now while he's there.
What about people that, that have the special plates or wanna get special plates? Do they do that at the time of their?
That would be, that would be the recommendation. If you don't want the digital. Um, plate, if you don't, or they're all digital, but if you don't want the standard plate or you don't want the new design that's coming out. You always have the option of choosing a specialty plate. Those do have extra fees associated with them, but. Yeah, a lot of them have a donation aspect or, um, and then there's always a one time special plate fee. Uh, but, yeah, but it's best to do it at time of, at time of grace. So anything that comes through the mail, we will mail them that, that um. Temporary plate with a note, the state is to, to sign a note that goes with those so that they know how to handle that. We'll just, we'll be here to answer any questions or. Make sure people call us if they don't get their plate in the mail. So there's just a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts to this project.
System gets hacked midway through the.
System gets hacked midway through the process.
Now, now.
Real funny.
On wood, but you know.
It happens, we know who to blame.
Yeah. So, that's all I have for that report. Now, okay, if I go on to my next.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so, last month I came to um, to request to build a clerk analyst two position that was open when Sheri Moran was um, promoted to tax supervisor. Well, since that time, my second clerk analyst two, which I had two clerk analysts, two positions in the back, um, has also resigned. And so now I have another opening, and so what I'm asking is for, for permission to build a two clerk analyst positions with the pool of candidates that I'm getting right now for the first one. The second clerk analyst position, um, they were primarily on the motor vehicle side. Um, they do our motor vehicle, our motor vehicle escrow program, they handle all of our book tags. Um, she handles our bank reconciliation, she also does title proving, um, answers the motor vehicle phone line, um, and so, uh, so yeah, another very important position that we have in the back, um. We are already starting to, having the one gone, we're already starting to fill in the, some of the effects of, um, how much longer it's taking us to get our approval, title approval done and that kind of thing, so, um. If you're okay, I would like to be able to look forward with filling this other position as well.
Can I just clarify, this would not be, so you don't have a spreadsheet assigned, because we would not be opening the position again. There are the exact same job descriptions, exact same positions. But we would be, um, instead of having filling one position from your previous approval to fill, we would fill two positions from that. So that's the deviation from our standard process. We wouldn't advertise our weekend, but it's only, it's only been a couple of weeks and candidates are fresh and they have some really great applicants.
All right, why don't you approve, approve the request to fill a clerk analyst two position in the treasurer's office?
I'd second that.
I moved a seconded to approve the request to fill the clerk analyst two position on treasurer's office, I'll lose favor.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, commissioners, and since we are on to the new year twenty twenty-four, if there's anything in twenty-four that you'd like to see we present, there are anything, any additional information that you would like, please don't hesitate to reach out, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Shyla. Next, Commissioner of Darren Solman, at nine forty-five. I'm Darren Christian. Good morning.
Yeah, pretty good yesterday, no to the.
In June.
You're supposed to get right up to thirty or thirty-one today?
Yeah.
You get a few extra degrees, the thousand.
Oh man, it's gonna get cloudy, I was hoping the sun would come out and melt a little more, but clouds are supposed to be rolling in. Look, Mr. Ford, how's UK doing?
I'm ranked number six right now, it looks pretty good, the SEC's down a little bit this year, so we'll see. That's what it's taken a couple of years, you've been Alabama, Tennessee, all, you know, and at a high level. I do, yeah, that's kinda my deal now, I try to mask the.
I know, she really got it going on today.
He has some OCD thing with me.
Wait for Darren.
Yeah, good, Darren. Chairman, board and commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to be here and report this morning, uh, Darren Solman, Director of Research Development, I'm Gary Chindel Thomas. Um, I'm gonna chat about the, um, uh, I mentioned this multiple times over the course of the last, last year, that, uh, have some, some new, um, uh, new programs launched uh, in December and a new website we're supposed to go to. So I wanna run through some of these access to capital solutions for small businesses that we've been working with a number of partners in around the community and the state on, um. Again, the, the packet I've given you has an overview sheet there on the front, uh, these are this matrix and those three programs are outlined there, I'm sorry, four programs, and then the, the follow-up pages are each handouts, um, some of those are front and back, so. Couple of Network Kansas programs, I think they're both English and Spanish on one pager, so they included both those, and then um, a, a couple of the other programs as well, but, uh, just, just as a reminder, what these are is, um, Empower Fund is, is a, uh, Network Kansas pilot program, they're not in Riley County, two this year, um, for, uh, loans up to, uh, mortgage loans up to fifteen thousand dollars for minority-owned businesses, they can't otherwise qualify for, for other funding sources, Elevate is a locally sourced, uh, utilizing some city of Manhattan Economic Development Fund dollars, um, up to fifteen thousand dollar, uh, loans, low interest. Uh, those, those applicants have to be located beside the sale is Manhattan, that's due to funding source, we're working on some other funding sources to add to that pool of funds, and, uh, in Elevate to try to broaden the geographic reach of that beyond the city limits of just, just Manhattan. Uh, the E-community loan is one that we've been, uh, administering here since about twenty fifteen or sixteen. Um, and is available countywide, uh, that is, um, gap financing, uh, up to thirty-five thousand dollars. It has to be bank-owned involved, um, or now that this Elevate fund exists, a person could, your business could borrow money from the Elevate fund and use that as a match, that fifteen thousand, up to fifteen thousand is a match for the, uh, the E-community funds. Um, and then typically we see those, some death cell projects, and last time to you that might be loose guy in a, in a business purchase, it might be, um, um, non-tangible things that aren't necessarily collateralized in a way of bank, and in, in a deal, and so it's actually gap financing, so if there's an overall, an overall number that, that machine falls, that you can finance up to sort of percent of it, um, that E-community program can come in and, and same with that GroKAS program, can come in and provide some gap plans and to get to that total. And then those GroKAS programs, those are federal funds that, uh, treasury funds that came down to the state of Kansas here, the Department of Commerce is local Network Kansas, and that, we, we hope that, um, administer, review and administer those at the local level. Uh, there, there are a number of programs there, including, uh, those for minority women, disadvantaged owned businesses, low, urban distressed. Businesses are located in rural, urban distressed areas, um, community asset projects and, and target sector programs. And so more information on all of these, including this matrix and, and, and a lot of breakdown can be found on this website that I pulled up here, which is funding. That's smartenergyk.com, as you can see, this matrix is included on the, on the website, and then there is a, uh, uh, underneath the matrix, there is a, a place you can, um, click and, and find significantly more information on each one of these programs. Uh, as well as, uh, as well as, uh, links to these, uh, links to these, uh, one pagers, so if you have folks that are interested in businesses, are interested around accounting and, um, in these types of, uh, access to capital solutions for small businesses, entrepreneurs, we encourage them to go to this funding that's smartenergyk.com website, uh, to click through, learn more, and then they can click on this button right here, this fired out button. That will take them to a, uh, a form that they can fill out, uh, with some basic information, location of business, um, use of funds, things that are, you know, what, what, what we use this for. Um, with the information from this, uh, short form, which just takes a couple of minutes to complete, uh, there'll be an email follow-up then, that, um, with, with some additional information about which of these programs they're eligible for, based on the information they submitted on the paper reform. And then that ends up being the, the gateway then to the, the all the applications, the additional paperwork and information that needs to be, needs to be completed to, um, to, to access that capital. A, a key local partner on all of this is the Small Business Loan Center, uh, so Small Business Loan Center out of Blackham University, uh, Chamber, uh, is Manhattan Chamber, um, along with Bottom Line Accounting, and they develop their local hosts, and they, we pay them to having a local office here, we house that office out of the Chamber here in Manhattan, provide office space for them. Uh, they will provide technical assistance on these programs, so we require that applicants work with the SBC to ensure that there's appropriate business plans, financial projections, and other associated documentation, and of course they can also provide marketing management, um, and other, and other services as well. So I would encourage you to share this information with, um, with, uh, businesses in the county, encourage you to share with bankers, with the, uh, professional service providers, um, and, and just with other, other folks that may be in the network or in the realm of, of, um, of business owners, which most of the time you can utilize some of these programs, and I'm always happy to come talk to talk to groups or, or share this information however, however is most appropriate, we'll be getting out doing business with banks and, and, uh, some of those different professional business service providers here, which the next couple of months will be a lot of outreach. Um, we have, have done that here a couple of years ago, in summer of twenty-two, uh, across the Riley Bottom Line Counties, and so that will be about the, and we'll look and do, yeah, we'll get some newer staff. Um, some of the staff in the Bottom Line County, we'll get out and make sure we give us all the information and, and, and try to help them, help them help, uh, help small businesses, so. Happy to answer any, any questions on that, or, or on.
There may be some changes coming on the application side, we had somebody from the SBC to speak yesterday on a national steering committee call. Um, things that you're not eligible for, depends on level of felony offenses. Um, still may, at some point in time allow you to be, and they are trying to take the school loans off, they're starting to be old school loan. Just giving you something to think about later, um.
Yeah, it gets a little murky on some of that with SBA programs versus this, or the Network Kansas is a state, there's a state entity that, um, um, through, through action of the legislature gets funding, um, to get to tax funds, they can sell or generate the funds that go into supporting their programs, and so they, they don't know what's following, you know, all of the SBA deals, a lot of times on the same application, the bank is doing, uh, they're the same deal, the bank is doing SBA loan, that you're matching against, so you end up having to make sure that you make sure that you, uh, qualify, um, and meet those guidelines, and, yeah, I'll, I'll give, I'll, yeah, shut me up, shut me out, ask you whether.
That caught my, that caught my attention when I was being discussed yesterday. Yes, now thinking about it, hindsight, I should ask a deeper question about it, though, when, thinking about it in real time, so.
I, I have a deep, a deeper than that, see how it applies to this particular, these programs and, and.
And it, it may not for the specific one, but it did come up in conversation.
Different questions? All right, well, thank you all, hand it over to Christian.
Good morning, um, I cannot believe we are all halfway through January, so, um, I was thinking earlier and talking with staff, I don't know if it's between the excitement of the winter storms, the elk herd, or the winter sports that we have going on. Um, but Fort Riley. Yes. Um, but, uh, Fort Riley is back to normal operations after coming back from holiday block leave and of course, fair weather delays. Um, and yesterday we had our first victory welcome of twenty twenty-four. So there were, um, about a hundred and fifty new soldiers, um, and their family members joining the community. Um, and of course, one of the highlights I've talked about, um, for me is handing out the visit Manhattan guides and tour soldiers and just challenging them to explore what is going on, um, in not only our city, but also the region. Um, I was counting, I think over all the soldiers I met with, there was only ten of them that were actually either from Kansas coming back home, or from our neighboring border states, Nebraska, Colorado, and Texas. So, um, a lot of them coming from the East Coast, um, and one thing I said was congratulations, you made it through your first winter storm. So, um, today we kick off, uh, ceremonies, so, uh, retirement ceremony will kick off at eleven. And then this afternoon, they will actually ca- uh, have the Big Red One Year Victory. Um, so like I said, I said it before, I thought we were done with the Big Red One Years, um, but, uh, honoring all of the victories that the Big Red One has had, um, is also important. Um, so they'll have their opening ceremony and then a radar night. Uh, and then January nineteenth, which is next, uh, Thursday, Friday, excuse me, uh, they will have a, uh, realignment ceremony for one-five and one-seven, and, as they will, um, they were under First Brigade and Second Brigade, but they will now fall under Devari, um, under Colonel, uh, Perkins. So, and then they will start recognizing soldiers January twenty-fifth. And they'll have a soldier recognition for all the soldiers, for their awards, highlights, and dedication. And then February ninth, they will host their volunteer of the quarter recognition. And as we all know, our volunteers are sometimes what makes, uh, the work get done. So taking time every quarter to recognize, um, not only family members who are volunteers, but also soldiers who go out and volunteer as well. There was no, uh, emergency lunch this month, but don't worry, we will be back next, uh, month. And we are actually planning to have Dr. Bob Smith, who is the, uh, Fort Riley Museum Director, come talk about the history of the Buffalo Soldiers on Fort Riley and, uh, only in Kansas, and then of course, give a, a museum update for all. And so, can you need any questions? Well, stay warm out there, so it's about to get brutal.
Yes, it is.
Go cheese.
Thank you, guys. Commissioner Julie Gibbs at ten o'clock.
You guys have a busy morning?
Yes, it has been, how are you?
Good.
Ready for the cold weather?
Yeah, yes, whether or not.
Exactly. That's for sure.
I know, raised and stepped up, and even Pudge's home, which is sweet.
How old is he now?
Seventeen.
Cool.
Yeah.
Junior?
Yeah, junior.
So, do you have an idea what he wants to do as he grows up?
I think so, he wants to go into business, that's what his dad went into, so I think he'll maybe follow his footsteps.
Type of business was his dad in?
He, um, had, they used to company, uh, development company, their own company in Kansas City.
Uh, like, is it housing development?
Yeah, and, yeah.
Real estate?
Too, yeah.
Uh, businesses too?
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Interested in that, yeah, but who knows, I think he could change his mind.
Go to college for that, or?
Yeah, yeah.
K-State?
I want him to go to K-State, but he will, he's looking at, uh, A and M or TCU. He wants to go visit those schools, so, he, he, the grandma lives down there, so.
Uh-huh.
So you could just stay here.
Close to mom's good, huh?
I know.
Close to mom's good.
Uh, we'll see, uh.
Give us just a second here, Julie.
Yeah, no, okay.
Just gonna stay in all weekend with cold weather?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Hibernate?
Yep.
Watch some movies or sports or something?
Yeah, I cleaned the house on Tuesday, but they were told so.
You can relax now, you're not prepared to relax all weekend.
Yep.
Got to shovel a little snow maybe, or that's what the seventeen-year-old did?
That's what he needs to, yeah, actually, my neighbor came over and he shoveled um for us early morning on Tuesday, he did all everyone's trick.
Is that Brad Shone?
Yep.
Oh really? That sounds like him.
Yeah, he does it every time.
Yeah, I I I told him, he, you know, him and I talked one time and said, you live next door, and he said he said hi or something, but you acted kinda shy or whatever. I said, yeah, she's really nice, she said, get to know her, I said.
Yeah, yeah, they're good people.
Yeah, he's.
They brought over a meal when we first moved in, so.
Uh huh, yeah.
Very nice neighborhood.
Yeah, I knew you guys lived close together. Is he right next door to you?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I know where his house is.
I'm sure he just loves my dog, she barks a little too much, and so when he's outside, he goes outside and she's always barking.
Okay, we need a, we need a motion here.
Make a motion, um. I can look, make a motion to recess with your board of county commissioners, convene as board. Board of County Health.
I was second that.
The movement second is to re uh recess as the Board of County Commission, reconvene as the Board of County Health, all in favor?
Here's my monthly update, um for January, we're looking back on December. And I didn't provide the expenses and revenues in the packet, so I just provided them on paper, so she may be able to read it even better then. Um any questions on the budget, show us provided? If no, I'll move on to program updates, starting with the maternal and child health program. MCH held all of their becoming a mom classes on Thursdays and Fridays, they had a total of ninety-three class participants, which I believe is a record high. Since they started this class, they had two Spanish BM classes with a total of eleven participants in that one. A total of thirty participants attended the three yoga classes that were held in the spirit by children attending the free child care that was offered. That project has been very successful at not only providing yoga for clients, but also to provide support for mothers outside of the yoga classes. A total of thirteen new client enrollments were completed in December twenty twenty-three, which is a forty-six percent increase in December enrollments from twenty twenty-two. Also, tentatively scheduled is the third annual baby shower, um tentatively on June eighth, um that's in collaboration with Sunset Zoo this year. So we'll provide um free admission into the zoo and we'll have that at the zoo pavilion. Um MCH has applied for the KDAG Core Sit grant, and they were awarded funds to purchase safe sleep bundles for the baby shower. And they also plan to apply for the Greater Manhattan Community Grant, um Community Foundation Grant again in January to. Purchase additional back-in-place facility rental and for marketing, so more details to come on that as they're busy planning the baby shower. Childcare licensing has been very busy, you can see here that in the month of December, they made a total of fifty visits across the five counties. They're currently investigating eight complaints and working on five initials. The childcare licensing team attended the KDAG quarterly training on Zoom on the sixth of December. And Heather presented to the Flint Hills Regional Leadership Group on December fourteenth. Her presentation included an overview of licensing and what the current um childcare situation is here in the region. Uh we're also seeking, um Vivian reached out to me about Heather presenting possibly for Good Morning Manhattan. Um it'd be very beneficial to update everyone on the the um childcare situation and really to educate people on what the childcare licensing team does. So hopefully we'll get on the schedule soon with that. This is a facility report showing that we are down one provider in Riley County, and this is current for this month. So we're slowing our roll from the depression, but um still moving in the wrong direction, we'd like to in improve that. And then as far as breathing Riley, they were not as busy with outreach events um and activities in December, but they're picking up again here in January. On December twelfth, they completed the Build Your Bounce for Parents, and they had four parents complete the program, this is a resiliency training. And they provided childcare for three children. Um on the sixteenth of December, they held their scholarship family holiday event in collaboration with the Flint Hills Discovery Center. Eight families participated, ten parents and fifteen children. Families had the opportunity to explore and enjoy the Discovery Center. And then on the eleventh of December, they posted, well, Little Off Lane's hosted uh the Provider Winter Social, they had eight. Uh Riley County Providers attend that social. And on the eighth of December, they collaborated with Child Care Aware to present behaviors training, and they had um fourteen providers that signed up. Actually, they had to reschedule that on the eighth because of the snow, so it's rescheduled for the twenty-ninth. And hopefully they still have fourteen that will participate. And coming up, they are just now starting their, today, starting their second cycle of circle of security for providers. Seven providers are currently signed up, and on the twenty-second of January, they'll host their monthly provider support group. All right, as far as WIC update. Um our dietitians have been piloting a new nutrition platform, which is called Nutrition Matters. This can be used as an interactive online tool to provide lessons, articles, and recipes to their clients. Eighty lessons were completed in the month of December. Dietitians have finished the maternal nutrition intensive course, this awarded eight CEUs or continuing edu- create education units. Focusing on a variety of concepts to improve health and nutrition from pregnancy to age five. And WIC continues to see a high caseload, um they're they're currently exceeding the um caseload assigned by the state. Um and I usually report on that every month, so um kinda struggling to keep up now with the dietitians that they have. We don't want to turn anyone away, but we've already started discussions with the state and with Elizabeth on HR to possibly add on another dietitian. To try and keep up with that caseload, um so that may be the case down the road as long as we get funding from the state to do this, um.
Sorry, uh the re, is that just Riley County or is that the region?
That's Riley County and Fort Riley as well.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and we're seeing an increase all all across them.
Yeah.
So they started um more referrals at the at Urwin um Army Hospital, which is great, but that increases the caseload, so. Um so yeah, to keep up with that, we may have to look at hiring another dietitian, and you may recall when Jane retired, Caitlin took her place. And we never did fill Caitlin's um position at the time, we didn't really, thought we didn't really need that, but now it's looking like we may need it. Uh clinic was very busy in the month of December, they had a total of four hundred and twenty-six appointments. Three hundred and ninety-six immunizations across two hundred and fifty-five patients. And a hundred and twenty-nine uh Title Ten family planning visits. Um they did have an outreach event with the high school, Manhattan High School asked them to come do meningitis immunizations back on the eighteenth of. December, and I think they gave around twenty immunizations. And then uh Jacob provided the fiscal performance report, uh so for the Immunization Action Plan, which is what IAP stands for. Hundred and twenty-four percent of projected revenue was received, ninety-four percent of budgeted expenses were spent. And he wanted to specifically note that insurance revenues totaled totaled a hundred and fifty-two percent of projections, so good job to Shelley. For capturing all of that. For family planning, which is FP, uh ninety-nine percent of projected revenue was received, ninety-one percent of budgeted expenses were spent. And pharmaceutical commodities spend totaled ninety-one percent of budget, so well done to Debbie Shaver, who's in charge of purchasing and inventory. All right, Beth update, so Skylar has provided this update, we did have um our MRC unit leader, she's part-time employee. Carly Tyler start with us last week, she's currently um still going through all of her training and getting situated. Um Beth completed the required fit testing in December, this is our annual grant requirement and accreditation requirement, so all of the employees have to be fit tested. And we usually schedule that for December, so it's a busy month for Skylar, uh but she got through all the employees, did a great job. And she attended the National Healthcare Coalition Preparedness Conference in Vegas in November. She attended sessions on mental health first aid, psychology and disasters, chemical surge annex. Lessons learned for natural disaster evacuations, and the summary of thirty years of Beth. So a lot of information, um she came back with some great uh great strategies to try, so she shared that with the leadership team in December.
Did you win anything?
No, not that I know of. And then lastly, I have a DEC grant update, so DEC is another acronym, the Drug and Danger Children of Kansas grant that we received through KDAG. This is a two-year grant, so it will end in September of twenty twenty-five. So I had to prepare a logic model that I turned into KDAG, and this is a working model, we'll uh we'll add to this as we go. But listed some of the key partners, these are some of the same uh partners that uh provided a letter of support for the grant. And then you can see there the key activities, um the first thing that we'll do is assess the community to identify our gaps. And I should have mentioned um our part-time DEC coordinator started with us on Monday. Um so Andrea, it's her name, and she's um getting trained right now, we actually um had her go through some orientation and then send her home because of the weather, so. Um she got her first couple days off, but um she will be doing part-time work um at the at the Health Department, and that will be under Shanika now. Uh so her first job is to come up with that assessment, um we can model what other coalitions in the state are doing, specifically Shawnee County is one that we're looking at. So kind of model some of their work that they're doing, um our outcomes uh correlate with the state's goals. Which include identifying our gaps with data that we obtained from that assessment. Improve identification of and response to drug endangered children by providing training to the professionals. And increasing awareness and collaboration through connecting with providers. Uh so we'll do this by um getting out there, connecting with them, and collaborating through our coalition, which will be an arm of the Substance Misuse Task Force. So she will work somewhat closely with Jenny, uh but more independent as this is focused just on children, the drug and danger children can be. And like I said, that will be a working model, we'll add to it and change some things probably throughout the next couple of years. Um next month, I'll provide you with an update on Jenny's work, our community health educators' work. Um she's just now getting started back with um making those connections here for Riley County in Manhattan. Um she already has a connection with the with MHS, she is um starting to get in back into their ninth grade health classes to present her presentation. Um she's made connections with the Chamber, with the Boys and Girls Club, um Randolph, I believe she has a meeting with them today, and then Riley Schools. Um so already getting out there and starting that work again, um didn't have much to report in the way of presentations and numbers, so I'll have more next month. We do have a meeting with her tomorrow, she's presenting, it'll kind of be a pre-presentation, so we can provide her feedback. She'll be presenting to myself, Vivian, and Shanika, um again, so we can make sure that um the data is up to date. And that she, that it's all reliable information before she goes out and presents this next round. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, next commissioners, you have uh Brittany at ten thirty. Right, have a good weekend, Julie, stay warm.
You, you too.
Make a motion to move to um. Recession. Move to recess as Board of County Health and reconvene as Board of County Commissioners.
I would second that.
They moved the second into recess as the Board of County Health and then reconvene as the Board of County Commission, all those in favor?
Cold weather slows down the mind.
Yeah, that does.
That's what, yes, right, depending due to the number of birthdays.
I have trouble sometimes with names.
I'll recognize that, I can never say, oh yeah, I've seen that week, Sunday, that period that uh. What's the mission that here, somebody came sit next to us. It's me, but I know I'm recognizing. I was from somewhere, but it's me who it is.
I know, it never did click, you know, it must have been a long time.
This guy, I'll see, I take it's. As this guy I've seen, you know, that was looking, I'm sure. Need them to move fire, that would help.
Yeah, I see, I suppose usually.
I knew where.
It's all in the computer, you just have to find it.
That's always, yeah, I said, I said, it's it's in my cloud care, I just don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, that's a good one. You know, when you get older, you've got so much in there.
Forget some stuff.
Yeah.
I remember also that sense of the meeting, though.
Yeah, me too.
I saw him in your phone number when you were a kid, and grandma, my most my grandparents, because they both lived in town.
Yeah, I can remember, I can remember that, you know, my daughter signed me up for as president, presidency year, the, that's a whole year where. This company, whatever, is, asks you questions that that she wants to know.
Oh, yeah.
You had to answer them, and then and then at the end of the year, they do a book, a book, and they also do a. Apparently have a setting at the AI, where they record your voice and they put your voice and.
Oh, I see.
Record stuff, and and uh so she did that, and you know, it's kind of interesting, because some, I've got like two questions. One, I got this, what's the first thing you remember? I remember, then then you start thinking about things, like, what do you remember, what that you did as a child, I don't know if I'll ever. First thing.
That's, I seen like Heather's kids, they're waiting for number, how how old was that, well, let's see, where were we living, because they're military.
Oh, yeah.
Mine, I lived in the same house the whole time until I was married, so I know things happened in that house, was that when I was eighteen, when I was twelve or six, I don't know.
Yeah, I remember, my mother was a physician, so she she took me everywhere, she know, organized and piano.
Oh, yeah.
My whole life, and so she took me everywhere. You know, everything, kissing, you know, they didn't believe in, they knew childcare.
Yeah.
Looking on the balcony, you know, and I've been cats, so, you know. Or, you know, weddings, I mean, it was, you know, interesting, see all that stuff. Those are the things that were coming back, I don't have. So my mom taught top pianos. Always music.
Oh, yeah. So you play?
I do, I should play more, I have a piano, I play, oh, it used to be really good, I sit down and really look at it.
Get back to it, yeah. I took last when I was a little kid, wish I'd taken that.
Yeah, I kind of had to.
But yeah, you did that, so, but you know.
My sister, she never was moving, I was moving, I liked painting.
Like, put her at my wife's, like, put her at, you got this little keyboard, we we had a piano for a while. Started weaving that big thing.
I'll sit down and play with someone, it's, you know, the newer pianos, um they lose their tune so much, this one just solid, it's big.
I may have to have soundboard.
Soundboard. You know, this book she that she's gonna do, it'd be really interesting, you know.
Because you know all these things, and you think, oh, I could stop that, you know.
I don't, did I tell her this, and did I tell her that?
Yeah. Kid, brother and sisters, right?
Oh, not anymore. I was one of those, oops. At forty, forty-seven years old.
Oh, really?
But, yeah, yeah, I was seeing, like, my oldest sister was, was fifteen years old. So I didn't know.
Yeah. Yeah, because by the time he rolled much, she was out of the house.
She had severe medical problems, so she did come back. So, yeah. But you live with something like that. See it in your eyes, I can't, there was this, it's a friend of hers, that somebody gets violent, really, I think. But, uh.
He's maybe, he's got four brothers and sisters, but the closest ones, eight, nine. But his, his son, he's, he's ten years younger than me. His dad is ten years older than my dad.
Oh, good.
Because I, my dad was nineteen when I was.
Now they started later.
Yeah, they were later, he was the last one, so they.
Yeah, a lot of that stuff is really interesting to write down or tell somebody about some things. So we'll see how this book goes.
Say, wishes, you know, wishing, good night to my folks, relatives, grandparents. And I knew a lot about what could be, but and because my grand lost, he believes nothing, he sold him to ask about something, talk about when her case said, oh, yeah, well, let's say we lived, that first year we lived, this said, I mean, he knew the IRS is where we got, the all the places he lived, but not, you know, different places they ran, but they.
Oh, that's amazing.
We need this, he was. He's my age so much, you know, but.
Yeah, my dad was real good, and I wish I would write stuff down. I keep driving around the country and say, oh, this is where so and so, this is where I live, and this is what we did. Like, I couldn't find that place anymore.
Well, that was, well, he would have been, yeah, but when Ken was in school, she had a gerontology class, they're supposed to interview. Yes, I mean, she had parents at the time, so she used my grandpa. We could video her, uh, recorded it, and we lost the tapes of that.
Oh, goodness.
That he talked about all the stuff, like, a bunch of different things, so she was asking questions.
Oh, really?
It was, it was really neat, but it's, yeah, lost.
Lost. No, I used to have an old camera. I have no idea what materials went. I wouldn't find it again. Where they went, I have no idea.
Agreed, particularly with the D M S station, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, I mean, there's several other areas. Some still out, Bob's are here, yeah.
Doesn't feel terrible outside.
Enjoy it. Well, the sun being out makes it just feel.
Do you get them okay on Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, things are getting things melting up though.
No. Well, the problem is now is if it melts, it'll still be wet, and this is going to reiterate.
Fill up your gas tanks today.
Yeah.
We gotta get out the cold and do it.
I'm gonna put a bottle of heat in mine, too, and I need to actually get mine in and get it serviced.
I've got my first.
Cold weather gets you.
Oh, no. I just got it serviced in October, so I've put all kinds of miles on it. I guess I've traveled back home for Thanksgiving, a few other, like Kansas City a few times, Hays a few times, Wichita. I guess it makes sense.
Big High News doing the heel frenzy today, so it's like two hundred and ninety-nine or something.
Oh, they are?
Well, I got, they got those randomly where they have like.
I know. I've got fifty cents off or something at Dylan's right now.
You can time it, right? But man, sometimes it is a frenzy to get in.
But my, yeah, that's why I don't usually mess with it. My uh my tank's three quarters of the way full, so I'm not really worried about it.
Yeah, we told both, we had that Monday.
I checked the antifreeze level on it.
I forgot about the snow weekends this year.
Paying for it, huh?
Twelve, fifteen inches.
That was heavy snow.
Oh, it was. I mean, had taken by layers and shovel it off.
I don't know, yeah.
Because it was I think, I swear, but there was snow from Nebraska comes down, comes down the highway, just runs and blows across, we don't have anything in the front yard that somebody curves around for, but hits the driveway. And we leave a big mound right there, and I like said, then, I actually last year, but it's snow fencing caught leaves. And I forgot to do it this year, paid the price. So I've got this drip, and I've just got a, just a carb bit sort of slice through it.
Seen a few of those.
Probably need to, probably need to still get it out, because it blows again, it built that hole back up.
Yeah, the way it's sounding for snow this month.
It's right, it's in the same flight, I mean, like I say, for some reason, wind currents are just right, but it just.
Tell the FFA to fly the planes in a different direction, get that string going someplace else. I was actually told that a jerky I made was too spicy. I'm like, what? I didn't think it was spicy enough.
I'll have to tell Julie, they need to do this on a landscape, make their typing a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
And we used to have a group of commissioners, and they're all older, they were just outright, we need old man font. And then one commissioner wanted that, Jim Williams, his first term, and he did not like any paper to stick outside a normal-sized binder, so it all had to be on that size paper. He did not like legal-sized paper.
You could do a little bigger.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's, I don't think, can you read that? You're not an old person.
That's tough to read, I can read it, but it is tough to read.
Whoa, whoa, wait, wait a minute, did you say he's not an old person?
Old enough. My wife says I say it's worse than mine, so I thought she just get her prescription updated.
Well, I struggled with the old, the old, the, the old font that they had on there, I couldn't read that.
Yeah, you can't, I can't read that.
That's, I can, I can actually, I can actually.
A magnifying glass here.
Yeah.
So I like to embarrass my kids at restaurants and turn on my flashlight on my
Oh, I know.
Phone to read the menu, you know?
That's fine.
Because you get, oh, you'll, you'll understand, I tell my kids, you know, they make fun of me on these, I said, don't worry, you'll get your turn.
Well, my eyes are, I haven't checked, and they're twenty-twenty, but you know, this is.
Darkness really impacts, yeah, for sure.
Well, no, don't you have to use the QR, you know, they always want to give you this QR code for a venue?
I tried to do that off the TV the other day with that.
Doesn't work.
They were using for the Chiefs game.
Oh.
And it wouldn't work.
Oh.
I'm like, and then somebody else made a comment about it, too, that it wasn't working for them either, so it wasn't just me, and I'm like, why do you put a QAR code up for something that nobody really wants to begin with, and then it not work? Well, that's really selling a, you know, I mean, the reality is, is what you're seeing there is the way, the direction it's going.
There's some team that's putting on their uniforms, how are you ever gonna get that off a uniform?
Yeah, I know.
I heard that just the other day.
You do that? Why would you put a Q?
I mean, I guess on TV, if they're standing right there or something, you can keep grabbing it.
What's the reasoning besides behind the QR code on you?
It's easier just to get to off of your phone, because every smartphone has a QAR code.
So if you see a football player and he's got a QR code on the back of his uniform, you can get that.
Yeah.
How's he gonna hold still long enough to get it?
Well, that's, that's the issue.
I mean, especially when he's tackled it on the ground.
That's when you get it.
Yeah.
That, that way everybody knows that you're actually paying attention to the game, you see.
That's surprising.
Catch them when they're doing their touchdown, you know, celebrations, and that's when the camera gets up close.
That's crazy.
Hey Brittany, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, here to present the December cash flows. We'll start with economic development. Our revenue for the year was two hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Our expenditures were one hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight twenty-nine, bringing our twenty-twenty-three ending unencumbered cash to three hundred and forty thousand, eighty-five dollars.
So that's, that's what we would have currently left over?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, is that one that stays in that fund, or does that go back into the?
It stays in our fund, in that fund, sorry.
So that would be twenty-three plus whatever is we have moving into a budgeted outside of expenditure for twenty five or twenty-four, excuse me. Okay.
Yeah, so without those projects, you can see down here, uh, are buying anything that's part of it, too, but um less estimated projects, it brings it to two hundred and four thousand, four sixteen one. So we still have some projects in here that like the economic development, if that was actually taken out, yeah, preparation, so. We have cash flows. We did not bring in any revenue for December, so our total revenue for the year was two hundred and eighty-six thousand, ninety-five dollars. We expended uh fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, bringing our total expenditures for the year to three hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. And our unencumbered cash is one hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven sixty-seven.
Watch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
CIP, again, we did not bring in any revenue for December, it's our total revenue for the year was seven million, five hundred and sixty thousand, twenty-three dollars. Our expenditures for December were four hundred and ten thousand, four forty-five, bringing our total expenditures for the year to three million, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. And our unencumbered cash balance is low million, five fifty-seven, six ninety.
I have a question on that one.
Yeah.
On, on the totals, it says there's three, three point three million of approved projects that takes off. Then what's the reserve in, the reserve funds?
The reserve funds are these right here.
Forget that every time.
That's why, that's why we add that, because it is hard to remember what it all includes.
You know, the, the three projects that.
And let's see, it includes that one, twenty-eight, nine that we put in there for.
Right. Yeah, yeah. I can't remember much, I'm a little bad.
I'm with you, me neither.
Don't feel bad. Sometimes I can't remember a day to day.
That's why I leak you little yellow Post-it notes.
Absent sales tax, um obviously, we did not receive any revenue in December, so our total revenue for the year was four hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars. Our expenditures for December were one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one eighty-eight, bringing our total expenditures to four hundred thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. That brings our twenty-twenty-three ending unencumbered cash balance to six million, five hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars.
But on that one, one of the remaining projects, it's with a big number, is that McCall Creek Road, now, they're not gonna do that one, are they? But now the next.
Oh, okay.
The next one. Shows that McCall Creek Road is the one that isn't that the one that hasn't been done? That's amazing.
Yeah, we probably need to talk to John about that one at the next budget planning committee.
But it was so far over.
Yeah, and if it's not realistic we're ever gonna do it, let's take it off of there. I mean, we have to discuss with the board if they want to do that, but let's discuss that with John.
I thought it was some kind of deal, they, it wasn't gonna work, we need to take it off, but something else.
It was so cost prohibitive.
Yeah, we can talk to him about that.
I think we were talking about using some kind of exchange funds or something that.
That's why I say we just need to sort of background on it overall.
And we've been trying to clean these up, too. The point two percent sale, cent sales tax, we received two hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars in December, bringing our total revenue to two million, one sixty-eight fifty-five, and that is also our total unencumbered cash.
We're hoping to fill that in with some possible projects.
You are?
We're hoping.
Finish off the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Next commissioners, you have Alvin, there is a ten forty, and the first of three bid openings.
Okay.
There's, yeah, we'll see, I don't know, review of that changes at the end of the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so, sounds good.
Didn't get any shorter. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if you can leave one member on one page by themselves, I mean, see.
Oh, yeah, well, uh, the final version is this.
Okay, then we can take it off there, just, we can talk about it on Tuesday.
I'm looking at grammar. I'm looking at the teacher again. You can't start a sentence with but, or you can't start a sentence with and.
Oh, yes, you can.
Yes, you can.
Oh, yes, you can.
Where? Under which grammar rules?
English, I mean. It actually started with old English. I mean, I argued that with the grammar teacher before, because you can connect, that's really the best way to connect sentences. That you've got.
I thought it was a comma.
And if you're like in Kentucky in the South, you can start, you can start a sentence with and. No, that in the South, you have to start with darling, sweetie. Well.
Bless your heart.
Bless your heart, bless your heart, you're just totally wrong.
I, I heard a lot of that in Virginia.
I think I told you, that drove my type A brother-in-law crazy when he was assigned a business in the South. He had staff who take two-hour lunches, he needed a bath, and it's so, bless your heart, we'll get it done.
Grammarly says there is nothing wrong with starting sentences with and, but, or other similar conjunctions. According to Grammarly.
That's not what I was taught.
Me neither.
I'd have been smacked over my head with a ruler.
I was taught the same thing. Oh, dare they! We were taught wrong.
Or either that or they changed the rules. Somebody changed the rules.
They do, look at any dictionary. Yeah, they do. They keep adding words that, well, quite frankly, aren't words. Which goes against the whole definition truly of a, of a dictionary, I don't know if anybody maintains a standard, just, anymore, it used to be, you go back to Oxford or something.
Okay.
Seems like a corruption in language. Okay, well, we are at ten forty, ladies and gentlemen, so we will, open up the bid process for the two dump body trucks. And, starting with the very first one here, and, this very first one is from American Equipment Company out of Kansas City, Kansas. So it is on the Kansas side. It's just the case now, okay. Um, let's see, a couple of different things here. Unit price for a single one is sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars, so to make the total bid for two, one hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and four. Um, does have another option, two for steel. Shows that at fifty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-three, and then for both of them, one thirteen, two sixty-six. Delivery days at, kind of interesting, um, a hundred and thirty to a hundred and seventy days. So within a year.
What was that total bid?
Total bid for which one? The original?
Not the last, the total overall.
The total overall was one hundred and twenty, uh, one hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and four dollars.
Yeah.
Even.
Just want to be sure I got it right.
Yes. See anything else, really to them there, so we'll pass it on.
Well, this good American Equipment Company. Base bid is for two, yeah, bodies, one hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and four dollars. Option two for steel, total for two is one hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-six.
Second one I have is from the Master Tech Truck and Equipment, that's out of Wichita, Kansas. Unit price for a single one here showing is ninety-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. For a grand total of both of those of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars even. It too has a steel option, a single unit, eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, or for both, that'd be a hundred and seventy-three thousand, uh, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. See, uh, it says estimated delivery date would be August twenty-twenty-four, some, eight months approximately, I'm not gonna try to correct the days on that. Got some cool pictures on that, so, yeah, that was next step in pages there, I'm gonna go ahead and send the paper book with that too.
Okay.
It's bids from Master Tech Truck and Equipment. Base bid for, uh, for two stainless steel nuts, total for two, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. Option two for the steel, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-four. And delivery of August of twenty-four.
Little bit more reasonable of a timeframe, considering what we've been through lots of years. Last one I have is from Reed Company LLC, that's out of Oneego, Kansas. Single unit price for that is sixty thousand, um, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. So for two would be one hundred and twenty-one thousand, uh, three hundred and fifty. And a couple of options there, an option for steel showing forty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars for a single unit. And then for both, that'd be ninety-one thousand, six hundred dollars. And then it's also showing a Reed Company AR four, four hundred bed on it. Single unit price for that would be forty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and then for both, that'd be ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty. It is showing, um, estimated delivery date of, uh, May thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four for that. If we wanted, uh, the bed, I guess separately, it'd be March, middle of March for that. I guess it'd be, the bed, the bed become fourth truck, but I guess we'd be there sometime.
Now, these are delivered prices, right?
Yes.
They're doing, okay.
All right, this bid is from Reed Company. The base bid, stainless steel dump body, hundred and for, for two, hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty. The option steel, for two is ninety-one thousand, six hundred. And then they're all very alternate, for AR four hundred bed of ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty. The delivery, five thirty, twenty-four, or, or the AR forty, March thirteenth of twenty-two. We, uh, send these, send the bids to staff for review and recommendation.
I would second that.
We've been consecutive to send back, to send these bids back to staff for further, uh, view and recommendation, all those in favor?
Next bid, commissioners, on fifteen-ton hydraulic dovetail trailer.
And we'll go ahead and then open up the, uh, bid for the, uh, the fifteen-ton hydraulic dovetail, dovetail trailer. First one I have is from Blue Valley Trailers, that's in Bornerville, Kansas. Yeah, pretty easy standard Ford, uh, base bids, thirty-nine thousand, even.
Is there a delivery getting from that?
Yes, April twelfth, two thousand and four, or two thousand twenty-four, two thousand and four, I guess you already have. April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, so, couple months. All right, thank you.
Good to hear.
This bid's from Blue Valley Trailers. Total price thirty-nine thousand, even, delivery date April twelfth, twenty-four.
One I have is from, uh, D and L Sales, I think it's Pecan, Kansas. Unit, base unit price that I have for this one is, uh, thirty-nine thousand, uh, seven hundred dollars. And it is not showing, um, not showing the delivery date on it, as far as I can see. Just to make sure. Considering, I would think that's some important information included. Yeah, I don't see anything on that.
This price from D and L Trailer Sales, Pecan, total price thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. That's delivery date.
Last one I have is from Point's Trailer Center, and that too is. Base unit price I have off of their bid is forty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Showing an estimated delivery date of April first, of, of twenty-twenty-four.
Bid from Point's Trailer Center to Pecan, total price forty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Delivery April first, twenty-four.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we return, um, the bids, or send these bids back to staff, just in consideration, including all the tables.
Oh, second, second, we just send bids back to staff for further recog, uh, further recommendation and recommendation, all those in favor?
Aye. All right, I was doing things.
Almost made it.
Next commissioner, one and a half ton, four-by-four regular cab chassis truck.
Let's go ahead now and open up the, uh, bid for the one and a half ton, four-by-four regular cab chassis truck. First one I have is from Laird Knoller Ford, and it's in Pecan, Kansas. Oh, okay, thank you. Ace bid with everything included on it that I see is sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. It does have an estimated delivery date of June thirtieth, uh, twenty-twenty-four.
Laird Knoller Ford, total price, uh, sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That's been delivery, June thirtieth, twenty-four.
Second one I have here is from Shiny Mission Ford, that is in Shiny Mission, Kansas. Little bid that I see for that with everything included is sixty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-three. And it says estimated delivery date of ninety to a hundred and eighty days.
Shiny Mission Ford, total price, sixty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. Ninety to a hundred days, ninety to a hundred and eighty days, delivery.
Last one I have is from Rush, that's at Keansville, Missouri. Then extra, the easy pull down wing. Um, total bid price with everything included, I see on here is a hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Showing a estimated delivery date of two hundred and ten to three hundred days.
It's one of the most expensive ones.
Something must be a special truck.
Yeah. This price, or, yeah, it's from Rush Truck Center, Kansas City, Missouri. Both priced one hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Check, it might have been EV.
Yeah. Um, delivery date, two hundred and ten to three hundred days.
Maybe it has a special paint job.
It's an EV, it would include the charger.
Yeah. So, I'd recommend we, uh, send these bids to staff for review and recommendation.
Second that.
Then we've seconded to send these bids back to staff for further review and recommendation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everybody. Yes, well, as I see, that's the end of our, uh, business on the agenda, I think you've got one other item, just so obsessed with this, let's see.
Yes, okay.
Uh, what you have in front of you are the track changes, and, and a couple of these, Lord mentioned by you, and I thought they, a couple of them are dramatic, which is, 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 is. And the other stuff is, Captain, I'm talking, this one is back to style. You can always, you can do some of those changes that I made, but you don't have to. Uh, let's begin at the top, if you look at the track changes, and I did add this, second sentence, talking about House Bill twenty-thirty-six, it creates a new property tax exemption across the state, and a new statewide, there, but in fact, the counties. That was necessary because of the following sentence, I talked about the impact, little clarification. I also added, and these are both my suggestions, that statewide impact will likely be mostly there between the towns, with installations. To be, to be honest as possible, it doesn't help, as, as you know. You want to be as honest as possible, always, in these letters, and there are things you do know, and there are things you just suspect. And, so. Well, you know, the interesting thing on that, if you're tracking, is probably four of the five counties with military installations are for the largest counties. By definition in state of Kansas, so.
Absolutely.
Make of that as you will.
Absolutely. Uh, just trying to recognize that that's where it's really, yes. And it's probably a good message, not just for the committee, but it's on the county, they're paying attention. Uh, test legislative testing. Not criticism, just if they happen to pick up on this and know there's a delay now.
Um, then further down the next change, I did add elections to one of those uh, county services, which does need to be described, because it's extensive, anybody get more assess. Presumably, as more and more election offices across the country. Down the next paragraph, here I did make a change, which I, I had missed in prior to the recent fact that property tax dollars available to fund Riley County's twenty-five percent share of coffee, not even uh, reduced by every existing property tax exemption created state, and then I added a sentence. At the very end there, that paragraph for space, and in Riley County, nearly forty-two percent of all property is already exempted for property. So that is important. Next paragraph. Uh, made a change that again, just make the sentence hopefully read a little better. Uh, reduce county revenue through all state imposed property tax exemptions undermines the ability of counties to fund the above locally imported services. Uh, then I did say all, all state imposed property tax exemptions. Then I ended up paragraph by saying that means counties must reduce or eliminate such local services or increase property taxes through a higher mill limit. Previously, there was a gap between these two paragraphs. So we began the next paragraph, talking about House Bill twenty thirty-six directly about passing it into current form. And I added, right after talking about the uh, the shift away from property tax liabilities to disabled veterans. Uh, I added, further this exemption makes an illogical distinction between the disabled veteran population and all other disabled persons statewide. And I had a rhetorical question, will the public believe it's fair to grant this tax exemption to the former population, although not until after? Thank you. Just, I know the rhetorical question's kind of a canyon type thing, but it sometimes makes things easier to read. And maybe if they're reading it, they won't drift off immediately. Perhaps. The next paragraph. I added, I'm talking about that shift and the unfair share will then be paid presumably, if this goes into effect. Those remaining property taxpayers here talking about those who are not disabled veterans will be paying the share of that disabled veteran's property tax liability. And even when that particular disabled veteran has ample financial resources to pay their fair share of the property tax burden. Because the example I gave was the disabled veteran who doesn't have a gun. Or they can't be, how do you determine that? It's always gonna be up to, you know, and not trying to engage in class warfare here or anything, but you've got to understand, I think, is a fair recognition, the public is potentially gonna have a problem. And if they understand what it's doing. And then the final uh paragraph, I just added language. Then we encourage this committee to not pass HB twenty thirty-six. Then I added this, you did not say this, but I thought it was the tenor of the conversation. Seriously consider ending the legislature's passing of more property taxes. For plugging in, I think. And then two sentences later, after saying at a minimum, any final version of this, that you're not gonna stop this bill, you're not gonna you're gonna do something, but at a minimum, any final version of this new property tax exemption should contain an income threshold that is near regime. Additionally, simple fairness suggests the revised version should also define disabled veteran to be those with a rated permanent one-hundred percent disability, period. Then I said, suggest such revisions, those are just described, House Bill twenty thirty-six. They help those taxpayers who share the property tax burden will increase to decide it is a fairer shift of thunder. Just leaving open the possibility, people may decide this is the way to go, as is their you know, they're entitled to make that decision, and you're entitled to have your view on behalf of those you represent. Do you see anything in there that's not acceptable? Do you see something further we can change? Cause select time to do it, you can stick around with this. So then, then your chance of those, the version of acceptance draft changes, you have to sign it. Out to the committee today.
Then you can probably make it so it's two pages and shit.
It is.
It is.
That's just that, that's because of the drag pain, it's a push it over. It's the draft, I have the final here.
Oh.
And it's on. We're a two-page.
Need a motion commissioners if it's acceptable.
Okay, um, I make a motion that uh, we accept the letter written to uh Chair Karen Tyson, it's the Assessment of Taxation uh Committee, all in favor?
Oh, second. Hold on a second, we, we kind of need to find probably what that is.
Okay. Make a motion uh, to approve the letter written to uh Chair, Chairwoman Karen Tyson, the Senate Assessment Taxation concerning written testimony or opposition to House Bill twenty thirty-six.
Oh, second. Okay, it's been moved on second to uh, the written testimony in opposition of um, Senate House Bill, excuse me, twenty thirty-six, all those in favor? Aye.
Old resign, please.
And we started.
Now, she's the chair of the Senate Assessment, but it's a House bill.
It was, it passed the House last year.
Don't they turn it to a Senate bill?
No, because it was attached to the Senate. It was attached to the appropriations bill that was, that came out of the Senate that ended up in conference committee, and then it was eventually vetoed.
Okay.
So now they're trying to just do this one standalone based on.
It's a standalone.
Yeah. And I think somebody already described, I think one of you described, I think the margin of approval in the House was pretty big. It was.
Hundred twenty-three to one.
Yeah. But it never did actually go through. They just attached it to the overall tax bill that and was vetoed by the governor and then
Have a good weekend, guys.
Are you going to your office?
I wasn't, I was going upstairs.
Oh, can I ask you for a minute?
Richard, you okay if I just grab one of these? Thank you. Okay, I think that ends all our business today unless anybody has anything else that and someone's in. I don't.
Okay, um, I'm at the motion to adjourn the Riley County Commission meeting as of January eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn this uh, January eleventh meeting of the Riley County Commission, all those in favor?
Aye.